Call the Springfield Local Schools Board of Education regular meeting to order. Roll call? Roll call. Mr. Petrie, here. Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Farola?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, Springfield High School and Junior High Students of the Month recognition.
So this was something that, Ms. Hannah called and said, hey, why don't we do this? And I said, fantastic idea. So do you want to explain just a little bit of what it is? Or you or Ms. Warner?
Meredith Gray and I took over National Honor Society this year.
Oh, did you go through the?
Can't get out of it.
So Meredith Gray and I took over National Honor Society this year. And one of our ideas was to bring about a student of the month at the junior high level and at the high school level. Our goal was to try to promote National Honor Society a little bit so that students, even at the young age of seventh grade, could see that if you keep your grades up and you do what you're supposed to do and you represent these four pillars, then you can apply for National Honor Society as a junior. And so what we wanted to do to involve our National Honor Society students was we wanted to let them have a say also. So we took nominations from teachers and we had quite a few nominations in September, which was very refreshing. And then what we did was we put all of those nominations, of course, with no names. It was completely gender neutral into a document where our National Honor Society kids were allowed to vote for one junior high student and one high school student. And we let them choose based off of the teachers' comments about each individual kid. So this year or this month, we have two, and I'm going to let Mrs. Warner present them because she's the building principal. But our hope is that with each month, it'll grow and that the interest will get piqued and maybe we'll have some students that strive to be student of the month. And then eventually, we can build some numbers in National Honor Society and grow our organization a little bit, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
So our junior high student is here this evening. Can you come up here?
Kylie.
Kylie, sorry. This is what Kylie's teacher had to say about her. Kylie has buddied up with a student with autism, come on over here, to make him feel comfortable in class. She's gentle and kind and an advocate for students with disabilities. She volunteers with her mother and she works with special needs kids outside of school. She's an inspiration to others and her actions make the world a kinder, better place. She was nominated by Mrs. Richardson and Mrs. Novicki. And this right now is front and center as you come into door A. It will later be moved here where our community room is so that all of the months will be posted. But our current month is right as you come in the door. And so this is for you, sweetheart, and thank you for being such a great student.
You're welcome.
Our high school student isn't able to be here this evening, but I will be giving her a certificate as well. And our high school student is Olivia Albrecht. This is what the teacher said about her. Olivia is an awesome 10th grade student. She lends a hand whenever and wherever help is needed, whether it's in the cafeteria helping Ms. Bar or giving aid to a classmate. She's confident, yet humble person who is emotionally mature beyond her years. She is kind to everyone. Olivia also loves to learn. Her positive participation in class is a breath of fresh air. She always has her work done on time. And that was for Mrs. Mitchell.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we're really excited to have this started at our board meetings and hopefully we're going to be able to grow where we can celebrate kids more at the beginning of each board meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Doc. Item five, approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 20th, 2022. Exhibit one.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Item passes. Item six, citizens comment on agenda items. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations.
And I know that this isn't the time, but I do want to say that Ms. Kim Redman is here. She is the superintendent of Porter's Lakes Career Center. So she likes to attend board meetings of the district. So welcome and we're glad that you're here.
Seeing no comments. Item seven, payment of bills monthly. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of September, pending audit. Exhibit two.
I'll make a motion.
So moved.
Mrs. Farola, you're in a second, okay?
Oh, I didn't hear. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Item passes. Item eight, acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for September 2022. Exhibit... I may be missing a page. Something didn't get printed on the back of this chapter. Three, four, five?
Exhibit three, four, five.
Okay. Exhibit three, four, five.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Item passes. Item nine, SLAC MOU for employment of O'Brien as a tutor. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with SLAC for the employment of Matthew O'Brien as an intervention specialist tutor for the remainder of the 2022-23 school year to fill a temporary vacancy left by Ashley Poles. Matt is currently on the teacher reduction in force list and will remain on that list. Exhibit six.
So moved. I'll second.
So this is Matt. Like I said, he was a social studies teacher, but he does have his special ed license. And when Ashley decided to take the rest of the year off for maternity, Christina reached out to Matt and said, hey, you got a job yet? No? Would you like to come back as a tutor? We worked with the SLAC. And so he will stay on the RIF list, but he's going to come back for the year to fill out. So we're excited to have him. Excited to bring him back.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Item passes. Employment, 10.1. Accept the resignation of classified employee Tiffany Cole effective August 16th, 2022. 10.2, resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Tracy Holstein from her two-hour cafeteria position effective September 29th, 2022. Tracy will still hold her four-hour custodial position. Release from reduction in force, 10.3. Release from reduction in force, the RIF list, certified employee Elizabeth Kreitz effective October 18th, 2022, due to securing employment as a teacher at Akron Public Schools for the 2022-23 school year. 10.4, employment. Employ Matthew O'Brien as an intervention specialist tutor to fill the temporary opening left by Ashley Poles for the remainder of the 2022-23 school year. Matt will remain on the teacher RIF list because he is being employed by Springfield Local Schools in the capacity of a tutor. 10.5, employment. Employ the following classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective the first day assigned. Karen Dubert, Miranda Smith, Jeffrey Tanner, and Teresa Morrison. 10.6, reassign classified employee Danielle Anderson as a 4.25-hour teaching assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure effective September 26th, 2022. 10.7, employment. Reassign classified employee Amy Trnasky as a 2.5-hour everyday reading teaching assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective September 28th, 2022. 10.8, employment. Employ Angela Manier as a 2.5-hour everyday reading teaching assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective September 21st, 2022. 10.9, employment. Employ Karen Dubert as a two-hour cafeteria worker at Shrop Intermedia School per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective October 3rd, 2022. 10.10, athletic supplemental contracts. Approve the following athletic supplemental contracts for the 2022-23 school year per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure. Kevin Pletcher, varsity basketball head coach, girls, 20%. Jason Holmes, junior varsity basketball coach, girls, 7%. Matt Bowley, junior varsity basketball coach, girls, 7%. Joe Cole, 7th, 8th grade basketball coach, girls, 10%. Kyle Dak, varsity basketball head coach, boys, 20%. Kevin Nash, junior varsity basketball coach, boys, 14%. Jordan McLean, 7th and 8th grade basketball coach, boys, 10%. Corey Tanksley, varsity wrestling head coach, 17%. Ed Suber, junior varsity wrestling coach, 12%. Breslin Walker, junior high wrestling coach, 10%. Melinda Weakland, head girls bowling coach, 13%.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Item passes. Item 11, personnel two. Volunteer, 11.1, volunteer coaches. Approve the following as volunteer coaches for the 2022-23 school year, pending proper licensure. Lucas Hahn, basketball coach, boys. Bill Thomas, basketball coach, boys. Joe Cole, basketball coach, girls. Miranda Terry, 7th, 8th grade basketball coach, girls. Cody Logan, wrestling coach.
So moved.
Garrison Harrison, too. Garrett Harrison, wrestling coach. Is the last one.
I'll second that.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
I'm staying.
Item passes. Item 12, substitute teacher list approval. It is recommended that the board approve the employment of the individuals on the Summit Educational Service Center substitute list as needed for the 2022-23 school year. The Summit ESC oversees the credentials and licensure of each individual and makes additions and deletions as necessary throughout the school year.
So moved.
Second.
So what we're doing here is instead of every time we hire a substitute and having them at the board agenda, once they're approved by Summit County ESC, because they do do the vetting through them, they're just going to automatically be on our list for us to sub.
So it's a little bit in addition to what Red Hill used to do?
Yes. It's kind of almost the exact same thing that Red Hill used to do. Absolutely.
Hopefully with better results than what Red Hill had.
We're keeping our fingers crossed.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Just pointing out a couple of reasons we made this switch.
Go ahead.
Did we have a?
Yeah, we had a motion.
Mr. Petrie?
Yeah.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Item passes. Item 13, preschool conference dates. It is recommended that the board approve the following conference dates for the Springfield Preschool Center. January 19th, 3:30 to 7:30 PM. January 26th, 3:30 to 7:30 PM. And April 27th, 3:30 to 7:30 PM.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And the reason why this is on there, those dates were not when we approved the calendar, so they came later. So that's why it's on the agenda for today.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 14, service agreement, Charles Schultz Building Company. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with Charles Schultz Building Company to provide renovations to the Springfield Administration and Preschool Center, the Boyer Building, located at 2141 Pickle Road, at the cost of $284,736. Exhibit seven.
So moved.
A second.
Okay. This project will be funded through the sale of our current administration building. Back in August, we approved the letter of intent for the sale of that building at a price of $400,000. And then we have been soliciting bids for the remodel renovations that need to be done here in order to move our offices here. This was the third round of bids. We had gone through some modifications in order to get to this point. The first bid, we did not receive any bids. The second bid, we received one bid that was far exceeded the estimates. We rejected that bid at this August board meeting as well. And then on the third round, we came with this singular bid in the process there that are within the architect's estimate range there. More than we were hoping to see bids at, but given current conditions, this is within expected ranges there and less than what we're selling the building for. In addition to the cost that we're getting for the sale of the building, we're also looking at saving in the ongoing cost of carrying the extra facilities. So just utilities and costs that we are associated with that that we can really show is about $12,000 to $15,000 a year that we would spend in utilities, as well as those other costs of maintaining the facility, brakes, fixes, ongoing maintenance such as mowing, snow removal, things like that, that we'll be able to not have to do anymore with the, with selling that building and concentrate on the remaining facilities here. So I think it'll be a better utilization of our space across the district and save us financially as well in both the short and long term. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. I read part of your summary that the HVAC is postponed for a while, but also see that, is it my understanding that we're going to lay the carpet now in the offices?
Not with our staff, but we will contract with the company to do it directly rather than going through the general contractor with that. So we can, based on some areas that we've already done, we can do that more efficiently ourselves, one, directly to the manufacturer, the distributor for the carpet than going through the general contractor. That was good for about a $6,000 savings plus. Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 15, overnight extended trips. Board members have received copies of trip proposals. 15.1, 7th and 8th grade Washington DC trip. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the 7th, 8th grade students and chaperones to travel to Washington DC from April 12th through April 14th. Three school days will be missed. All expenses will be paid by participants and through fundraising. 15.2, softball team trip to Myrtle Beach. It is recommended that the board approve the Springfield softball team and chaperones to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina to participate in the Grand Strand Softball Classic from March 26th through April 1st, 2023. This will occur over spring break, so no school days will be missed. All expenses will be paid through fundraising and by participants.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
So we're excited that we're bringing back Washington DC. We do 7th and 8th grade together that way, and then we go every other year for them. So the 7th graders then would have gotten it, and then we skip a year and then they'll come back. So we're really excited that they get to go to Washington DC again, coming back to some normalcy, and that's great.
That was an aggressive schedule when I looked at that.
Yeah, it is.
And I have a really good in Washington DC, so at some point in time, it's on my bucket list, so.
Yep. There, you're going to need chaperones. There you go. Everybody heard it out there.
I'll have to look and see where my time allows me to do that. And then, thank you, Mr. Curry, for being here for the softball. My daughter did that at another school, and it's, it is a great time for the team to gel, come together.
Do you need chaperones?
All right. And you heard it there, too. There, you put them down.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 16, donations. It is recommended that the board accept the following donations. 16.1, Spartan Booster Club Incorporated, donation of $24,720 from the Spartan Booster Club Incorporated to the Springfield Athletic Department. 16.2, Epcon Lane Environmental Pest Control Incorporated, donation of $100 from Epcon Lane Environmental Pest Control Incorporated to the Springfield Girls Soccer Team. 16.3, Pence Brothers Siding Incorporated, donation of $5,000 from Pence Brothers Siding Incorporated to Spring Hill Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
So this, you know, love donations. We're very pleased with the Spartan Booster Club for the, I do believe it was $24,720. So, you know, that's going to help our athletics, so we're really pleased with that. Thank you to Epcon for their donation for our girls soccer team, which they did really well to share and we're looking forward to improving that sport. And then thank you to the Pence Brothers. They reached out to Ms. Garner to give a donation of $5,000, and their purpose of it was to help the school and help teachers, help students who might not be able to have the supplies or the means to participate in different school activities. So kind of like to even the playing field. So for example, the PTA does Popcorn Day. So for the kids who maybe do not have the money for the dollar, this will be an extra fund for them to help out. So we really do appreciate the Pence Brothers for helping out with our littlest, with our little students and helping them out, so.
John's a good, John Pence is a good man.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 17, policy review. Board members have received copies. Policies, 1617, 3217, 4217, and 7217, weapons revised. 220, adoption of courses of study revised. 2280, preschool program revised. 2413, career advising revised. 2430, district-sponsored clubs and activities revised. 2431, interscholastic athletics revised. 3120.08, employment of personnel for co-curricular, extracurricular activities revised. 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students revised. 5335, care of students with chronic health conditions revised. 5336, care of students with diabetes revised. 5460.01, diploma deferral revised. 6550, travel payment and reimbursement, relocation costs revised. 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA revised. 7440, facility security revised. 7440.03, small unmanned aircraft systems revised. 8210, school calendar revised. 8320, personnel files revised. 8330, student records revised. 8600, transportation revised.
Is this first reading? First reading.
So this is the first reading. Just, so we go through a company called Neola, and they go through the policies and anything that has to do with law or updates in the general, in the general sense. They come meet with us, they give us the policies. Sometimes there's no choices. Sometimes they just say it's a change from this to this. Sometimes they give us choices of where, of what we should check off. We meet as an administrative team, we go through them to meet what we need. And I do appreciate everybody reading the policies because it's always great to have another five set of eyes on them, to catch anything in case we miss it. So we do appreciate it. They are located on our website if you go to board policies, so they are open to anybody can read them. Next month, we will have the second reading and the approval for them. Are there any questions right now on any of the policies that you had? If you could take a look at them one more time, just to double check, to make sure it's everything that we want, I would appreciate that. And then what we will do after they're approved is we will work with the administrative guidelines to make sure that our administrative guidelines and our policies line up with each other. Thank you.
Item 18, treasurer's report.
I wish that young lady was still here. I had the pleasure, when I was her age, to work for my mom that taught out at the workshop back when special needs kids were together, not in the school building, but it changed my life, really. It was, it made me a better, if this possible, 14-year-old boy that was really in his own world, but once you worked with these children, you know, my mother always called them God's angels, and it didn't take me long to understand she was right. And to this day, I find myself... And to this day, I find myself attracted and always like to go up to people that, that have needs that, you know, we, we just, we don't, we don't understand sometimes. It's nice to see that continue with that young lady. Onto the finances. I wish they were great. What is nice is what's in front of you is the first quarter's actuals. And there's two numbers I want you to really focus on, because go down to the line, total revenues. You'll see that our actuals and our estimate are off $190,000. That's mostly real estate money. We anticipate that closing, that gap, because we're going to receive a TIF in March. There's a warehouse located on Gilchrist Road. One-third of the warehouse is located in Springfield, the other two-thirds is located in Magador. I kind of wish it was switched, because we're receiving over $100,000 in Springfield, but the other district's receiving over $200,000. But we'll take everything we can get. That TIF was arranged by our legal people up in Cleveland that specialize in that kind of details. So it worked out real well for the school district. If you go down the line, and what I have in front of you in line, total expenditure is 4.50, you'll see that we're beating budget for, by 197. So the first quarter, we're only off our budget by $7,000, which, considering our spend for the first three months is 3, 4 million, 3.2, that's 7.2, plus 1.5, is 8.7. So if you can spend 8.7 million dollars, we'll only be off $7,000. That's a good estimate. We are going to be doing our five-year forecast next month. There's two forecasts. Obviously, you know the one I want to present and be approved, but we have to be prepared to have two forecasts, okay? One's going to be with the passage, and one's going to be the other one. It will create a much, the one with the passage will keep us financially healthy for five years plus, which is what we need in this district. Things are fiscal '22. Everything was Senate state. We are on time, we're on schedule. Our auditing team is starting to ramp up again for another audit, right after the last audit was completed. So we're going to kind of have fiscal '21, and then four or five months later, fiscal '22 is going to be finalized. So that is, is doing much better. I never want to go through another fiscal '21 again in my career, I know that. And things are looking better, and I always want to thank my coworkers for all their help during that time. Any questions on this forecast? This is not a forecast, this is just a budget for the actual. Next month will be the forecast, so.
Also, next month, we're going to be doing our two financial recovery plans for both incidences, for when the levy passes or if it shouldn't. And we will have those ready to go because of some of the things that we do want to bring back as soon as the levy does pass.
Chris, what's the due date on these forecasts?
November. They pushed it out a month. It used to be October 30th. I'll have it done by November 15th in advance of the deadline.
Okay. When is the deadline, what's the deadline date?
30th, a month later.
Okay. Item 19, central office report.
Okay. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to go off script just a little bit, because I know my son's watching and wish him a happy birthday to Liam this evening. He's got to spend his birthday watching me here.
Happy birthday Liam.
And then, October has been recognized as the first annual Ohio School Safety Month. Earlier this year, Governor DeWine signed House Bill 583, which officially designated October as Ohio School Safety Month, making this month an opportunity for schools to increase public awareness of school safety programs. And also part of that, developing the Ohio School Safety Center, which is a kind of a clearinghouse and go-to group in Columbus that schools can utilize to help improve safety practices, go-to for information, and help with crisis situations. We all have a role in promoting safety and following safety procedures and reporting concerns. As part of this, we want to highlight the Safer Ohio School tip line, which is an anonymous reporting tool that can report threats to school or student safety. The tip line is available by calling or texting 844-723-3764, or 844-SAFEROH.
Say that again for them.
844-SAFEROH. And you can call or text that hotline to report threats or problems with schools or students there. So the Ohio School Safety Center urges students, parents, and community members to report concerns immediately to authorities or to a school tip line instead of sharing viral social media posts. Reporting it to the proper authorities will ensure the information gets to someone who can investigate it. Sharing posts on social media does not guarantee it's received by authorities that can investigate that. And we've, we've been part of this before through the Ohio School Safety Center, where threats have been reported to them. They, they call us no matter time, day or night, and we get to work with them through their resources and ours locally to review that threat. Luckily, it's never been a threat directly against us with so many schools called Springfield and Ohio. We've been confused once or twice before, so thankfully, that's, that's been the case. But the, the teams there are great to work with, and this is a great resource for schools to, to have there. Also part of Ohio School Safety Month, this week is the National School Bus Safety Week throughout the week. So part of that, we will be doing our safety evacuation drills later this week as the weather permits. They were actually going to be tomorrow, but it looks like a lot of precipitation in the forecast, so we're going to push those back till the weather cooperates a little bit this week. But we'll be doing those to run children through those drills of how to safely evacuate the school bus. Any questions?
So in the area of curriculum, right now, we are getting ready to ramp up for, of all things, testing season. Unfortunately, we start in early, late October, early November, and it pretty much goes through the end of the school year, because we always have something going on. Please realize that our kids are so much more than whatever number they get on this test. But it is a requirement that we do, and we do use the data that we receive from it. Our youngest Spartans who will be taking the test are third graders right now. They will be doing the third grade reading guarantee test. It starts the week of Halloween, so October 31st, we're not testing that day. Please know that. But that is the week we are testing. We have those five days right there to do the first round of testing. These students will then get an opportunity to take the test again when we hit the testing schedule again in spring, which then leads into our open season for our test takers in the fall, who will be either retakes or students who want to improve their scores because they need points for graduation, which then leads us into spring testing and then the end of the school year. So we're beginning to get there. Our teachers are, are making sure our students know that the test is important, but they are not trying to overstress themselves or the students, so please know that that is going on. For you people out in the audience who have third graders, please make sure that they have great breakfasts and get good night sleeps before the test. It's always helpful. So unless you guys have questions, I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Zigabut.
So tonight, I was just going to share some of the, the time that I've spent with our special education teachers. We have been working at the high school two times per month on our PLCs, and one of the things I want to share with them is a book that I've read in the past, and I thought it was very meaningful, so I thought that was something good I could share with them, and that might influence their teaching and their, you know, how they impact students. And also, I meet with the rest of the building staffs at Shrop and Spring Hill monthly, and I'm very thankful to the teachers, because we don't have a lot of time to meet and keep up with things, but they're willing to carve out 20 to 30 minutes of their schedule to meet with me, keep me updated on things that are happening in their buildings, what are their needs, what are their wants, and to learn some new things, or to update IP, you know, goal writing and find times like that. So I'm very thankful to them that they, they're willing to meet with me and talk with me on that time, and I think it's a very good use of their mornings. And I think that's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you.
Item 20, superintendents' report.
So first, I would like to say thank you to everybody who gave up four weeks, the last month, to finish our Portrait of a Spartan. We are right now finishing up on the final product, so we will have that ready for you in November. Hopefully, the people who are participating will be able to come to the meeting, and we will be able to share that. Remember, this portrait, our, as a community, we came together and we said, okay, what is it that we want from our K-12 students? What's the most important competence? They're all important, but what are the seven most important competencies that we really want to focus on with our kids? And the seven that, the district, and believe it, it came up from you doing it individually to doing it as a table, to doing it as a whole group. So it was a really great process to get collaboration, which, by the way, is one of our competencies, and consensus. So our seven competencies are communication, collaboration, critical thinking, responsibility, adaptability, integrity, and empathy. So after we get the final product done, our next step is to how do we then bring this into the classrooms? These are, these are things that we should be teaching anyway, and should be going hand in hand with our lessons. But what does collaboration, let's say, look like in a kindergarten class compared to collaboration maybe in a 11th grade government class? You know, your collaboration in kindergarten might be playtime around the kitchen set, if they still do that. Whereas your collaboration for 11th grade government might be, you know, a debate on the different, the Bill of Rights, or something like that. So we're really looking forward to bringing this out. So again, thank you to everybody who participated out there. The feedback was fabulous. They liked the conversation, they liked being part and part of the school, and that's what we'd like to do more and more. So I do appreciate that. This Saturday is the 85th Annual Turkey Festival, put on by the band. I don't know exactly what that is, so I'm really looking forward to attending. If any board member would like to attend, if you let me know, I can, I know I have a hotline right to Mr. Cole to get some seating for you, so if that's something that you think you would like to do, give me a call, and I'll get, call Mr. Cole to get you a November 8th, very important day, very important day. It is voting day, which is very, but it's also a very important day for Springfield, because there's no school for the students, but thanks to the hard work of Mary over there, putting together our professional development for our teachers. So it's going to be kind of the same format that we used at the beginning of the school year, where it's going to be a, a menu of different classes that they can take. And again, our principals are going to, along with the whole administrative team, including myself, will be presenting some sessions for the, for the teachers to come to. So we got pretty, we got really good feedback on the first one, so we're hopeful we'll get the same feedback for this one. And we really like doing our, our professional developments like that. And then finally, this Thursday at 5:00, Summit County ESC does their education celebration. And this is, teachers from all the schools in Summit County get nominated to go to a dinner, and then from there, somebody is picked as the Rookie of the Year and Veteran Teacher of the Year. And representing Springfield is going to be Shelley Van Guten, who is a counselor, who is going to be our Rookie of the Year, and Andrea Novicki, who is going to be representing our Veteran of the Year. So we're going to wish them luck. I will be attending, and Michelle will be attending, and those two, of course, will be attending along with their families. So we'll keep you posted on, on what happens with that. But any questions at all of what's happening in this last month? Thank you.
Item 21, items worthy of your note. October 20th, Shrop Intermediate Conferences, 3:30 to 7:30 PM. October 21st, end of first quarter. October 27th, Shrop Intermediate Conferences, 3:30 to 7:30 PM. October 27th, Springfield High School and Junior High Conferences, 3 to 7 PM. November 3rd, Spring Hill Conferences, 3:30 to 7:30 PM. November 3rd, Springfield High School and Junior High Conferences, 3 to 7 PM. November 8th, no school, staff in service, and Election Day. November 10th, Spring Hill Conferences, 3:30 to 7:30 PM. November 15th, next regular Board of Education meeting, 6 PM, Springfield Preschool Center. November 24th and 25th, no school, Thanksgiving vacation. November 28th, no school, conference comp date.
And also, too, October 26th, this Wednesday, is the Boobash, which is going to be at the Lakemore Plaza. And also, so that's from 5:00 to 6:00, and we will have a table set up there, and we will be giving out candy representing of Springfield schools. And then, starting at 5:30 to 7:30, Shrop is having their haunted house during that time. So it's going to be a busy day for the kids of Springfield, so hopefully, we'll keep them entertained on, on Wednesday.
All right. Item 22, citizens' comments. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none, item 23, board members' informal. I would like to start by saying I was privileged to be a part of the Portrait of a Spartan, and I didn't make all four weeks, but I did make two. And my participation in that opened my eyes to how dedicated this community is to this district, and some good conversations with people around the district. Shelley and I have already talked about some changes we want to make as a result of those, so it was a very positive experience, and I'm thankful I was able to be a part of it. Somebody else?
Can I? I have two things.
Okay.
And going back to where I lived most of my life in the school, I want to, first of all, recognize or thank, whatever would be the appropriate word, for the new program that National, Michelle, the National Honor Society has joined, Michelle Warner, for being able to celebrate that. Any positive recognition is a great thing. So thank you for doing that. I know it's a little extra, a little extra time invested, but good. And the other thing that I'd like to mention is that the other, last week, I had to deliver something to a classroom at the high school, and as I was walking to the teacher's classroom, I walked by Andrea Novicki's room. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
And I looked at, in her room, and I'm like, what are you doing? You know? I, I went in to see what it was, and it reminded me of, if there's anyone watching this from, that ever had a Nick Frankovitz in class as a teacher, it kind of reminded me of the programs that he did, working with getting patents and having the kids write programs or papers for the different places that were giving them opportunities. So Andrea is to be congratulated, and I'm sure there are other teachers in the district that are getting grants also. This just happened to be the one I saw. She just received... She just received a NASA grant, a grant from NASA, and I would, you know, I would suggest that once they get up and running, that she comes in and tells us and tells everyone, because it's going to be a phenomenal, that grant is going to be a phenomenal experience for the students that get, excuse me, participate in it. And, you know, I went a little further and reached out to someone I thought might be able to do a little publicity on that grant, so we'll see how that goes this week. But thank you. That's, you never leave education, do you?
Once it's in your blood, it's in your blood.
I have a couple of things. I'd like to thank Kevin Hannah and the golf team, and we have a participant, can't think of her name offhand. She went to state.
Yeah.
Camilla.
What's her name?
Camille.
Of course.
Camille LaPores.
Yes. She went to state. First time we've had a female golfer go to state from our school district. So, that was, that was a proud moment, at least in my, in my thinking that we've had an outstanding golfer for four years. Best wishes to her. To Miranda Terry, I want to thank you for being a coach, and I've watched your posts, so very positive with how you've worked with the girls. And now, this, we have this building, and when you talk about professional development, and you've always wanted a room, now you have this room, so I look forward to how you're going to utilize that. And as with Larry, I did do Portrait of a Graduate. I didn't attend the last one because I had my grandkids in from Austin, Texas, so they kind of took a little bit of my heart that night, so. But I'm curious to see what the final product is.
It's coming.
And as Larry said, it was very interesting to see how the people interacted, how the groups interacted, the tables interacted. I think it's a really good push forward on what we are as a community and what we believe in, and it will solidify that. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, kind of pitch for the levy. I know how hard times are for everyone with the cost of living and everything, but I think the school district is going in the right direction. We've got some momentum going, and we need your support on this levy to keep that momentum going. That's all I have.
I'd first like to thank the Spartan boosters. I work with them quite often at the concession stands, and, I mean, we have three hard-working ladies that Tara, her kids don't even go, aren't even to schools anymore, and she's at the concession stand. We have Gina and Julie that also have kids in the district that sometimes have to miss their own kids' sports just to cover up. So, thank you to them. They do donate a certain amount to each and every athlete, which is big. We have parents that are spending a lot of money for their kids to play sports. We have a lot of coaches that are working very hard to do fundraisers, and because of their hard work, for my volleyball team, I was able to purchase a sweatshirt, sweatpants, and a tee-shirt, and every kid got that. I didn't have to go ask mom and dad. They didn't have to ask grandma and grandpa for any more money. So, as I go off that, if you can ever help work the concession stand, it's a lot warmer in there on a Friday night. My own son plays on the football team, and I've worked it. I'd rather work it as him being a freshman than him being a senior. So, if you can, basketball season's coming up, and it's a lot warmer inside. With him, I can't, I got emotional today on my own social media. I feel like I've been begging for years for this levy to be passed. I have my kids' pictures from when they were in first grade, my daughter, second grade, my daughter's now in fifth, going around passing out literature, asking for people to vote for our levies. There's not a more, what, easier way to afford it than right now.
You can't get any cheaper.
Can't get any cheaper. I work in the city of Greene, and every single day, I drive to work and wonder why our kids can't have the same thing that those kids do, and I believe that we, they deserve it. We've got new leadership, as was requested. We've got new board members, as requested. We've been more transparent. Can we do better? We can, but we need the help of others in order for that to happen. We're more, I think we're out there all the, I mean, seems like wherever I am, I run into Shelley, or I run into Dave, or anybody, we're out there. So, all I ask is for a chance, pass the levy, and come and help us make it better for the money that you give us. It's not going to be our money. It's your money to spend on our kids. So, November 8th, we would really appreciate your, yes, vote?
Awesome. Thank you. I do have one more thing. So, one of the, through the Portrait of a Graduate that came up was talking about our sports and just recognizing some of the things that happen with sports. We talk about education. So, what's going to happen is every month, I'm going to get a, some sports excitement, and I'm going to send it to one of you, and during the board informals, I would like if you would read the things that's happening for the sports. I'm going to do today's, but next month, I would really like, like I said, whoever wants to do it, I'll pass out. So, just a couple updates for the athletics. The boys' golf team, they were MAC champs, so, you know, kudos to them. I think we're going to have them here next morning. Jack Morgan, he was the boys' golf MAC Coach of the Year. Camille LaPores was MAC Girls' Golfer of the Year. Kevin Hannah was Girls' Golf MAC Coach of the Year. We at Springfield had two golfers qualified for the OHSAA District Tournament, Brady Han and Camille LaPores. So, that was for golf, so we had an amazing golf season. For cross-country, Peyton Carney, she set, or he set a new record for the boys' cross-country running, a 5K time in 1616, which is crazy. I can't even walk it up for that. Peyton also finished fourth in the MAC championships, and he will be recognized this Friday at the football game. Brianna Curry, Girls' Junior High Cross Country MAC Champion. She also set a new home course record at Waterworks with a time of 12 minutes and 44 seconds. So, we're really looking forward to seeing what's going to happen as they get older. Nora Kunkler, Girls' Junior High Cross Country Runner-Up. Tyler Souza, Boys' Junior High Cross Country Third Place. He also set a new home record at Waterworks at a time of 11 minutes and 22 seconds. So, that is extremely exciting. The volleyball program had another successful Dig Pink Night. Raised $4,500 for the Side Out Foundation. The junior high soccer team finished the season with an 8-3 record and were champions of the Lake Center Christian postseason tournaments. And Miranda, thank you. The homecoming bonfire was reignited with great student and community support, and all the feedback I've been getting from that was just amazing. So, thank you. Thanks to Coach Talab, the band, cheerleaders, and senior athletes. They're going to visit Springfield and Shrop to hold their Traveling Peps Assembly this Thursday. This Friday is our Senior Recognition Game. The team will take on Cloverleaf at 7:00. Fall Athletes' Senior Recognition will begin at 6:20. And believe it or not, winter sports are underway beginning this Friday with the start of girls' basketball. So, we don't, no rest for the wicked. We are just going right into one to another, so I'm really looking forward to the winter sports. I love football, but wrestling is my sport, so I cannot wait to see, not that I wrestle, but I cannot wait to see what happens with that.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 24, executive session. It is recommended that the board go into executive session at this time to discuss the compensation of a public employee and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
So, you know, one of the questions that we get all the time is, what is executive session, and why do we go into executive session? All meetings from the Sunshine Law have to be public, but there are some reasons why you have to go into an executive session. Now, first, you cannot call all an executive session. I couldn't just call them up one day and say, hey, let's go into an executive session meeting and not post it. So, it always has to be in conjunction with a regular meeting or a special meeting. So, the public meeting has to be held first, and then we can go into executive session. When we're in executive session, no actions or decisions can be made in there. It is just for purely discussion. If an action was going to happen after the executive session, we would say, right now, there's going to be an action taken after, so if anybody wants to stay, they would be able to stay, and we would come back out and take an action. But at this point in time, it's just for discussion. And there's only certain reasons why you are allowed to go into executive session. We just can't go in there just to just chit-chat about whatever it is we want to chit-chat about. The only reasons why we can go into executive session is if we're talking about the appointment, the employment, the dismissal, the discipline, promotion, or demotion, or compensation of a public employee, or if there's an investigation or charges of an employee or a student. We can go in and discuss that. If the employee or the student in that case wants to come out into the public and do it, then we can, then we do it out there. Another reason to go into executive session is the purchase of property, the sale of property with competitive building, or the sale or disposition, or, you know, getting rid of older properties if we don't need them. The third reason is if our board attorney was here, and we had any conferences with our board attorney. But the board attorney has to be here if we were going in for that reason, and that's if we're going to go into some sort of court case or that's pending or intimate. If we're preparing or, I can't read my reading, if we're preparing or conducting or revisiting negotiations during bargaining time, that is also something that cannot be talked out in public. Matters to be kept confidential by state law or federal law, and finally, security arrangements and emergency response. So, if we were going to be talking about protocols of what happens if we have an active shooter, you know, we don't want that out into the public and say, hey, this is what we're going to do, and let everybody know what it is. So, those would be in held privately. And then finally, confidential information that's regarding an application of economic assistance or negotiations with another political subdivision, you know, related to infrastructure improvements. So, those are the only reasons why we can go into executive session. And as Larry read, we cannot say, oh, we're going in for all these different things. We have to be very specific of what we're saying and what we're going in there for, and then that's what we're going to be talking about. So, today's one was about compensation of public employees and matters required. So, that is what we will be talking about in executive session. So, if anybody ever has any questions about executive session, I know, Miranda, you answered the question from the one parent that we had. It's not something that we're keeping secret by no means, but it is something that we have to do every once in a while. And if anybody has any questions, I can't talk about what happens in executive session, but if anybody has any questions about what executive sessions are, please give me a call, and I would be happy to go over that with you again and why we do it.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Trola?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Thank you. We are going to executive session, and there will be no action after.
Yes, absolutely.